Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and thank you for moving to the middle. I really appreciate that. Doesn't it feel intimate? Aren't we good? Yeah? Feels good, doesn't it? Mm-hmm. Well, there you go. So, we are glad you're here this evening. My name's Roger Brown. I'm Assistant Superintendent of Support Services. And I will be the moderator for tonight's town hall meeting. This is our second town hall meeting. And so, we are glad that you took some time out of your evening to be here and to get to know our new superintendent, Dr. Fagan. And we're really excited. I mean, we are excited about her being here. And I think after tonight, you're going to walk away from here and go, wow. That is fantastic. So, tonight, you'll be able to ask Dr. Fagan any question that's on your mind. Anything that you've been thinking about. And she will be glad to answer it. So, but to get us started, I would like to introduce our Spanish translator, who is a teacher at North Belt Elementary, North Belt Teacher of the Year, and a finalist for District Teacher of the Year, Ms. Correll. And she will come forward and talk about the services in case you need any of that assistance this evening.
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Bueno, primero que nada, bienvenidos a todos. If ustedes necesitan una traducción sobre la presentación de hoy, estoy a sus órdenes. Pueden sentarse alrededor mío y yo voy a ir traduciendo en el momento que se estén haciendo las preguntas y que se estén respondiendo. Thank you very much for your presentation. You shouldn't do that. But I'm very glad to be here and to help out in this meeting. Thank you, doctor.
All right. Thank you so much. Tonight, if you have a question, there's a couple of ways that you can ask that of Dr. Fagan. We have two microphones here. And we do ask that if you want to ask a question, that you approach one of those microphones. This is being livestreamed so that everyone can hear your question. And then also, we have a basket in the back. And there's Jamie and the crew in the basket. And if you just want to write your question down on a card, you can do that. And then they will bring it to me. And at some point, when there's a good break in the action, I will ask that question for you. Okay? So, there's a couple of ways to do that. We have two hours scheduled for this. So, until 8:00 this evening. And I will, around 7:50, if we're still going, I'll try to rein us in a little bit. And then make sure that we stay on time so that everybody gets to leave at 8:00, because that's what we have scheduled. And we want to value your time as well. So, you'll also see here on a slide, the next meeting, which is next Thursday at Atascocita High School. So, if between now and then, a question pops in your mind, or you have friends or family that couldn't make it this evening, next Thursday, 6:00, Atascocita High will be the third town hall meeting. Okay? We good? We're good? All right. So, at this time, I would like to introduce to you our board president, Keith Lopez, who would like to say a few words and introduce Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you so much for coming tonight. The purpose of this meeting, obviously, is to meet Dr. Fagan, our new superintendent, the first new superintendent we've had in our district in 15 years. And to really allow you to ask any question you want. You can ask the hard questions, the uncomfortable questions, even the softballs, if you'd like, to ask Dr. Fagan to get to know who she is. You don't have to state your name when you get to the mic. Just come up and ask the question. And we encourage that. So, please, don't be afraid. Ask those questions and get to know her. But that's all I have in the introduction. And without further ado, we have Dr. Fagan, UMBL ISD's new superintendent.
Did you? Okay. Are we good? Okay. You got your mic under control?
I've got it under control.
All right. We don't want anybody to have any hearing issues there. Okay. Well, thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate that you have taken time out of your busy schedules and come here to meet me and visit with me and ask your questions and really connect. Because, as you'll kind of understand later, one thing that's really important to me as a leader is to really deeply understand the students, the staff, the parents, the community, the individual schools. Because I don't think you can lead from a place without that deep understanding, without that knowledge. I'm going to back up just to see if we can get the feedback better. So, I appreciate that you've taken the time to do this. And I hope that there'll be other times in the future that we can get together also. So, I apologize for those of you who were here on Tuesday, because this is going to be a little bit like being in my second-period biology class and then being in my third-period biology class. Because I'm going to start with just a little bit of a sort of speed-dating, if you will, version of getting to know me, so that you just have that sort of background and context. So, first of all, I was raised by, for the time I was about three till I was in sixth grade, by a single mother who was an English teacher. And she started out as a high school English teacher, but she ultimately became a middle school English teacher. And so, you might know what happened when I got to middle school. I had her for my English teacher. Because I grew up in a small town in southern Iowa. And there were about 2,500 people. And the manager of the local convenience store, Mary Murphy, would call your mother if you were not in school. So, nobody ever missed school. Because everybody knew everybody, and that just wasn't an option. So, my mother was my middle-school English teacher. And because she was a single parent, I spent quite a number of evenings, as she did ticket-taking at gates and various other things. In the summers, she would teach for Upward Bound at the college in Pella, Iowa, Central College. And so, that was kind of my life. And then she got married when I was in sixth grade to my stepdad, who, guess what? Was my high school social studies teacher. So, I had my mother in middle school and my stepdad in high school. And it was fun. And they knew everything. And so, in any case, education was always the topic of conversation at my dinner table. And at the time, when you're a teenager, you don't necessarily think that's a great thing. But as time went on, I decided, well, you know, I want to go into science. I know that. I love science. Science is my thing. That'll come back later. It still is my thing. But one of my things. And so, I knew I wanted to go into science. So, I thought, okay, pre-medicine, that's probably going to be it. I want to go into pre-med. Definitely not education, because that's what my parents are. And you know how you feel when you're 17 or 18? You don't want to be like them. So, regardless of what was probably best, that was my feeling. So, I went to college and I started taking science courses to get ready for pre-medicine. And one of my professors, Dr. Zera was his name, he came to me and he said, hey, Liz, the dean has resigned. He's leaving to go to another university. And I've been asked to be the interim dean. And there's no way I can handle my load of courses and be the dean. And you've taken so many science courses. Is there any way that I could talk you into teaching the lab portion of biology for elementary teachers? And I was kind of, eh, you know? And then he told me he would pay me. And I have to be honest, I was a Pizza Hut waitress at the time. I made $1.75 an hour and plus tips. And so, I thought, all right, you know, this could really help out. So, I planned for the course and I taught my first session of it. And I loved it. I loved it to my toes and back. I would have done it for free. It was the light of my life. So, I relented and told my mother and my stepfather that I would ultimately be going into science education, that that is just what was meant to be. And that was where my heart was, regardless of what I was thinking. So, I immediately changed and became a science education major and went on to be a high school biology and chemistry teacher. Also, physical science in my first year of teaching. And those of you that were first-year teachers understand that. And then advanced biology as the years went on. And so, I really loved teaching. And I wasn't sitting around going, what's my next step in life? But I had this wonderful principal, Rick Hilbert, who said to me, hey, Liz, you know, sometimes Roger, the assistant principal, he has to be gone. And when he's gone, would you want to substitute for him in the office? And, you know, just kind of see what it's like to be an administrator? So, I was like, okay. And I did that. And I liked that, too. I liked it a lot. I loved helping other teachers and working with students in this different capacity, working with parents. And so, then I went on to be a high school principal. And I did that for a number of years. And then my dissertation chair, oh, and somewhere in there, I got married. And to a really great guy, a really amazing guy, who's an engineer. That's his sort of trade. But he is currently a stay-at-home dad. And anyway, so I got married and was pregnant with my first daughter. And my dissertation chair, I was at Drake University, working on my doctorate. And my dissertation chair, again, one more of these things. Hey, Liz, have you ever thought about going to work for the Des Moines Independent School District to be the executive director of high schools and support all the high school principals? No, Sally, I haven't really thought about that. I'm very pregnant. I'm going to have this baby. I'm really cozy in my position in Valley High School. And she said, oh, you got to do it. You know, the superintendent's amazing. The deputy's amazing. You love it. They really need you. So, I went over and I interviewed. And I was asked to have that job. So, I was the executive director of high schools, went on to be the associate superintendent in Des Moines. And then both of my parents retired separately, both to Arizona. And I thought, you know, it would be really great for my kid, at the time, just one kid, to be near her grandparents. I think that's important. I really, I value family. I value community and roots and all of those things. So, I applied to be the superintendent, Tucson Unified School District, and was offered that position. And really enjoyed my time and work there. I learned a lot of things working in the Tucson Unified School District, as I did in every single district. I've been in the poorest county of Iowa, Decatur County. I've been in, you know, a very wealthy suburb of Des Moines, West Des Moines, at Valley High School. I've been in Tucson Unified, that has a federal desegregation order. And I've learned so much from every single one of those experiences. And I value every one of them. So, went on to Arizona and quickly learned, as my little three-year-old became a four-year-old and then a five-year-old and was going to go to school, that Arizona is very challenged in funding education. That they're probably last or second-to-last in the country for funding education. And the per-pupil funding, when I left there in 2010, was $3,100 a student. And just for reference, if you don't know, it's over $8,000 per student here. And it's very challenging to provide children and teachers and support staff and leaders what they need with that kind of funding situation. So, Douglas County opportunity came before me and I agreed to interview. And this time, was pregnant with Olivia. And I interviewed on a Sunday and Monday. My husband had to drive me home on a Tuesday. And on Friday, I had Olivia. And so, I have two children. One that today is 11 and the other one is six. In fact, Meredith just turned 11 on Tuesday. So, she's just 11. And went to Douglas County. And, you know, there was a lot of challenging things. The community had some very strong ideas about where they wanted to go in education. And there wasn't always 100% agreement from everyone, but there was a large group that there certainly was. And I worked very hard there to help the teachers build a curriculum and build assessments and build the capacity of teachers to build assessments, so that we could measure what matters most instead of just what's easy to measure. And we could move forward in our instructional strategies for students, maximizing every teacher's strength and working with them on the things that they find challenging. And really re-crafting and getting away from the teach-to-the-test system of the past. And after six years there, really felt like I had built the capacity that I promised to build. And I had made good on all of the promises I had in the district. And that I could leave and the great work that had begun would continue. Because, in my opinion, that's the mark of a great leader, is somebody who can build capacity, work with others, support others, you know, sort of clear the way for things, and then leave and all of that continues, because it's not dependent on one person. And so, after six years, I felt like we were in that space. And it was a good time for my husband and I to start to contemplate the next iteration of our family. Because as you grow up with your children, and I don't know if you feel this way, but the way I feel is that every time, I learn more about who we are as a family and what our values are and what we care about and where we're going and the kind of place we want to be. And so, as a result of that, my husband and I literally laid out a map of the United States and started crossing off states. We started at that level. Not that state, not that state. And ultimately, got to one state, the great state of Texas. And then from there, we started crossing off areas within Texas. We really started drilling into communities and school districts and understanding all of the different opportunities. Because Texas is a large state and there's a lot of school districts here, quite a few openings, actually, even in the Houston area this year. And as we explored all of these different places, and remember, he's an engineer, I'm a science teacher, that's just who we are, we really narrowed it down to one school district. One school district where we felt we could have our children be part of the community, go to wonderful schools, be surrounded by wonderful people, where I would be a professional asset to a school district and a place where we could kind of thrive and put down roots and have that sense of community that we really want to have. And so, I applied. And have been incredibly honored to have had the opportunity to serve as the superintendent here, even if it's only been for two and a half weeks. But still, to the idea that you could go through that thorough of a process, I even had friends that were coming to Texas for spring break. And they said, hey, do you want us to go check it out? So, I was like, yeah. So, in March, they were here. They did all kinds of stuff, including visiting two schools. And that was before any of the process that was formally moving really had begun. Because we wanted to really make sure. And so, we moved forward with all of that. And to think that we did all of that work and we really worked hard at it, but you never know what's going to happen in the interview process. And I was more than thrilled when the board asked me if I would be the next superintendent here. More than thrilled, completely honored, very excited. I feel happy for my family. I've loved every minute I've been here so far. And just see a wonderful road ahead together. So, to that, this is the number-one question superintendents get asked. So, what's your vision? What are you going to do? What are you going to change? And I want to just go ahead and take that one on right away, because it's important that you know this about me. I am, in the back of my mind, sort of that science teacher, always. And so, it's important to me to really gather data, if you will, gather information, talk to people, visit schools, spend time understanding qualitative data, not just quantitative data. And then, once you understand all of those things well, to use that to support a community or a school, or even in some cases, a classroom, in moving from where they are to where they want to be. So, I don't come to you with a list of things that I'm ready to jump on. I don't have a list of policies I want to implement. I don't have a list of programs I want to implement either. I really want to spend time getting to know the district, the schools, the community, everything about it. And then find out what we collectively want in our next iteration of ourselves. And then I am supposed to, in my opinion, use my skills and attributes as a leader, the things I've learned and my experiences, my expertise, to help us go from where we are to where we want to be. So, that's the answer to the, you know, what are you going to change? And, you know, maybe it sounds funny, but, you know, I don't have a list of anything to change at this point. I'm really just here to get to know everyone and everything and then serve and support those who are doing great things for students. So, okay, I think that's the quick version. And that was kind of quick. But that's the kind of quick version of me in a nutshell. And I hope that that gives you a little bit of context for, you know, where I've come from, the experiences that I've had. All of those experiences contribute to who I am as a teacher and as a mom and as a leader. And I hope that you'll see that consistently throughout our time together, which I hope is a long time. So, with that...
So, there we go. If you have a question you would like to ask, please approach either of the microphones. Again, you can write your question. There's cards in the back and they'll get that to me. And I would be glad to ask your question if you have a question. So, go ahead.
Good evening. We spoke on Tuesday. It was very informative. I appreciate how you presented yourself. Some questions have come to my mind, which is one of the reasons why I'm here. You've kind of addressed one of them, which is, when you apply for a job, you know, being a teacher, what is your goal here? You know, you said that you liked UMBL area, that you really wanted to work here. But what is your goal, besides, I want to leave it a better place? Because I think that, as educators, that's probably our number-one thing, is that we want to leave the community that we serve a better place. But what is your goal? What do you see, your skill set, that the board obviously saw that said, hey, we want her? You know, how is that going to come? You know, what do you see that as, you know, for, you know, this community? Because really, UMBL ISD happens to be three separate communities, I feel. You know, you have the Kingwood, you have the UMBL, and then you have the Atascocita, Summer Creek area. And so, that was one of the things that I had brought up on Tuesday. So, kind of, you know, what's your goal for our community?
So, at a high level, I think it's fair to say that my goal for the community is that all students find a path to success, success that's defined by them and supported by us. That we are teaching all students the outcomes that they need to be successful in their lifetimes, whether they're going into the trades, the military, post-secondary, like college or a two-year degree, any of those things, any of those pathways. You know, we used to have sort of a certain set of knowledge, and we felt like if we covered these things, all students will be successful. And today, we know that that's not really the case. And we also used to think this. I would sit in my classroom and go, oh, Billy's so creative and Sarah's such a great team player. And we used to think you were sort of born with those things. And today, we know so much more about education. We know that children are maybe better at this or that, but all of those skills can be taught and learned and developed and grown. So, a student who says, oh, I would like to go into video game programming, but I don't care for math, you know? We, in the past, we'd be like, well, you know, maybe you want to think about some of these other careers. Today, we lay down a path and we support those students, because we know motivation is key and all skills can be developed, except for my ability to catch balls. But that's a whole nother topic. I just, PE wasn't my thing and, you know...
No hand-eye coordination.
Yeah. Something about that. You know, I like, not those sports, for myself. I like watching them, but yeah, not playing them. So, in any case, you know, I want, at a high level, I want every child to see a path to success. Find a way for that path to sort of unfold the way that it needs to. Because children are unique. And learning and teaching is personal. I want to make sure that we're teaching the right skills and outcomes. I hear constantly from businesses and industry and higher ed, even, you know, just all over the place, like, you know, you got to send these kids with more collaboration skills, more communication skills. So, I think that we've got to work on those things. I want to support teachers in really finding unique ways to teach students. I think when I was a young teacher, we were kind of like, if I covered it, I did my part. And today, we think of it a little differently, right? Now, it's not so important that I just covered it, but it's important that they learned it. So, how do you do that? How do you bring down remediation rates? How do you, you know, connect with students in a way that makes the learning long-term? And there's so much research about the way that the brain learns now, that we know that connected topics are learned better than isolated topics. And motivation enhances that learning even more. So, there's a lot of stuff that really early adopter teachers are wanting to work on and learn. And I love that work, because education is really who I am. So, at a high level, I would say, you know, those are some of the things that I really care about. I think we have to figure out the accountability and assessment piece. I know that we need to be able to explain how we're doing. But I don't think that education at a high level has figured that out yet and done it the right way. And I think in some cases, kids have really suffered for that. And so, we have to do better on that. And I don't think we can wait for somebody else on a white horse to ride in and fix it, because they're just, they haven't and they're probably not. But I do think really talented educators and really talented teachers who are pioneers and early adopters and enjoy working on that work, they will be the people to solve that. And they will be the people that need to be empowered to work on that. So, those are some of the things that I think are pressing in education in general across the entire country and specifically here. The conversations I've had, although limited, you know, are very similar to a lot of the conversations I've had in other places.
That's the great thing about education, is it's not really different anywhere you go.
Yeah. It's not completely, it's interesting, because...
Yeah. The dynamics are different. It's, you know, the vehicle is just, you know, a little bit different. So, we addressed my 17-year-old. I have a two-year-old. One of the things that this district has is the dual-language program. We only have three campuses. Within UMBL High School jurisdiction, feeder pattern, whatever you want to call it, we have one school that has three classes, which is really great, I think, because our community that services, or that UMBL High School services, is largely, you know, diverse and multilingual. What I would like to see is, going forward, having that program expanded. You know, having, you know, because my son, sorry, I'm getting a little tired. My twang is coming out. My son, it's that southern drawl. You know, at 17, he's not multilingual. And I feel that if he had had that opportunity, because he started out at Lakeland, which is one of the elementaries that feeds into UMBL High School. And if he had had that opportunity at an early age, maybe not so much a dual-language, but, you know, because I know monetarily, it's very expensive, because you have to have that bilingual personnel. But going forward, is that not something that the school district can look at? Because our community at UMBL High School is largely, you know, Hispanic and it's hard to communicate sometimes. As a teacher, I know that. And if my child can do that, then maybe I can do that. And especially since I have a two-year-old, you know, I don't want to be fighting for these limited spaces. Does that...
Yeah. So, I've actually heard from more than one parent who asks about that very thing, about the expansion piece. And I haven't had the opportunity to look into the details around it. And so, what I can tell you is that it's definitely on the radar, that there is interest in having more opportunities like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as they're making their way. Dr. Fagan, there was a question that was sent in. Do you believe that most teachers are good teachers?
I think, I think most teachers are good teachers. I think teachers care about students or they wouldn't get into the profession. It's a lot of hard work. I think that most teachers work very hard every day to accomplish the goals that they've set for their students and work every day to figure out that one more difficult thing that they haven't quite gotten with that one student yet. Teaching is a very rigorous profession. It would be like, I equate it to a little bit like a physician, having 25 patients all in one room and, you know, diagnosing 25 and setting them each on the right pathway to health. It's a little bit like that. And so, especially today. And so, I think that it's fair to say that I believe most teachers are good teachers.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. In your introduction, you said, at Douglas County, you wanted to focus more on testing what matters most. And I was just curious, from your perspective, what does that mean?
Well, so, it does vary state by state. So, in my opinion, there are certain skills and knowledge that are probably the most important core things that all students should know and be able to do. And unfortunately, my experience is, most of the high-stakes tests don't really measure those things very well, because they're very difficult to measure. So, if you want to measure the creativity or the entrepreneurial aspects of a student's learning, they're not measured on those kind of tests. If you want to measure a student's ability to collaborate well on a team, something that most of us have to do in our jobs, they're not measured on those tests. Communication, there's certain aspects of communication that are loosely measured, but many aspects of communication that are not measured at all. Writing has long been a challenge in high-stakes testing, because of the grading of it is just very erratic at best and scored very poorly at worst. And so, I think that if you look over, if you would, if we would just sort of pull the audience here and say, okay, what are the most important things in the job that you do every day, or even just functioning as a citizen? I think that we would all come up with a pretty similar list of things, problem-solving, critical thinking. And yet, a lot of what we have depended on for data to tell us how we're doing with an individual student or a school or any of these things, don't really measure very well any of the things that any of us would consider the most important. Now, reading is important, and there's no question about that. I think that we would all come up with a pretty similar list of things, problem-solving, critical thinking. And yet, a lot of what we have depended on for data to tell us how we're doing with an individual student or a school or any of these things, don't really measure very well any of the things that any of us would consider the most important. Now, reading is important and there's no question about that, so we do want to know that. But I think that we need to make sure that we're giving our students feedback on a lot of things, not just what's easy to measure.
So, your answer made me think of another question. So, do you have ideas of how to test those things that are more difficult to test, like the examples you gave?
Sure, so, so, testing isn't maybe the right word that I would use. I would use assessing because some of the best assessments in existence don't feel like tests to students at all. The ability to integrate skills and use them all at the same time in authentic situations and then have a teacher who has ability to, to say how you did on these things that we all agree are important during that authentic situation, is the best way to measure true acquisition of skills and true use of knowledge. So, you, just knowing something isn't all that impressive, right? It's the ability to use that to evaluate something else or to create something new that is impressive. And you can only do that in an authentic situation usually. You can do simulations, they're okay, but if we're going to get to that really high level of assessment, we want to have them as authentic as possible. So, yes, it can be done, yes, we've seen it done. There are some groups that are dabbling in the idea of performance assessments. There are teachers who are really sort of pioneer teachers who are working on, what are some things that I can ask my students to do that are authentic? Whether it's, I've seen students doing original research and collaborating with, you know, doctoral researchers over Skype, et cetera, demonstrating their abilities on everything from laboratory techniques to critical thinking to evaluation, all of those sort of important things. So, yes, it's possible, yes, I do have some ideas about it, but it's really in the early stages of assessment. What I can tell you is, as teachers have the opportunity and build the, and have the experience of building capacity in that area, they really do a nice job with it and the data are actually very sound. In fact, there are districts across the country collaborating on some performance tasks to see if the teachers can provide those tasks, grade them, and then share their results back and forth from students all over the place to see if that, if, because one of the pushbacks on authentic assessment is comparability, right? So, how do you norm, you know? And, and so, that's, that's part of the challenge too, is how do we do that? But, you know, the parents that I, that I, they talk with, you know, I think the DRA2, if you're familiar with that reading assessment, where a student sits down and they read to their teacher and the teacher scores the reading, right? They, they score the parts and pieces as well as the whole. And that's a very authentic situation where the teacher learns a lot about that student and they can give that student feedback. And that's one of the most important things to me when I sit down with my daughter's teacher at parent teacher conferences is, "Tell me about DRA2. Tell me about when Olivia was reading to you. You know, how did she do? Did she know, understand what she read, which was there, could she comprehend it? Was she fluent? Did she know the words?" All of these things. So, I think we've seen glimpses of it over time and DRA2 certainly has comparability. So, we know it can be done, it just hasn't been done. And that's a direction we, we probably need to start thinking about. I'm not saying eliminate some of the, you know, ACT will probably always be part of the world or SAT. And I don't have any problem with that. I grew up in Iowa, I took Iowa tests of basic skills every year, Iowa tests of educational development when I got older, then the plan, the ACT. So, I don't have any problem with that, but it's one data point and I think we're overweighting it. So, that's just my thinking on assessment.
So, my second question, thank you for that, that was very interesting. What is your understanding of the direction the school board wants to take the district in the future?
So, you know, the school board didn't talk with me about specific taking the school district in any certain direction, other than, you know, I'm a, I'm a somewhat of a competitive person and in that I like my school district to be the best school district anywhere. And, and they were on board with that idea, that we would have, you know, the most desired by parents, the most loved by students, the, the best school district that, you know, where students could go and be as successful as they want to be and we meet all kids' needs regardless of their unique circumstances. I mean, those are the things we really talked about because that's where my passion lies and I think there was great agreement on those pieces. And then, of course, school boards always want to make sure that we're continually improving in sort of our operational aspects of how are we handling finances, how are we handling capital issues, technology? So, that's more of the management part of it, but certainly we can be, you know, we can improve in those areas always, everybody does. And, and so, really, that was kind of the core of it, was a real celebration of the culture that exists and a lot of the learning that happens here. The community being solidly supportive of the education and the district. The whole-child aspect of education that didn't fall away when perhaps other districts kind of pushed that to the side and said, "No, we need to do double blocks of reading and math because that's all they're testing." So, that whole-child piece, making sure that we're devoting resources to the unique needs and things in the district. So, those were parts of our conversation. There was no, there was really no conversation beyond that because part of what I'm hoping that we all get to do is have community conversations like this when it's not a get-to-know- Liz, but it's a get-to-know-where-we-all-want-to-go conversation so that we can collaboratively, you know, we have a vision, but what does it mean to you? And, and what would the next step toward that vision look like for all of us? Are you, you know, are, are we satisfied with our curriculum? It's a, it's a fair question. Do we want to take it anywhere else? Do we want to incorporate more skills? Do we want to think about assessments? These are all questions that I think we should collectively answer. And so, part of what I really enjoyed about the interview process, it was very lengthy and rigorous, but I really got to know board members individually and collectively. And one of the things that I really liked was that there wasn't, and I even joked with them in one of the interviews, because I should have asked this question before, not here, but last time, but, you know, I said, "All right, so you guys have a, a plan that you want to implement by fall because I'd like to know that now." And, and the answer was unequivocally, "No." And so, part of what I liked was the fact that this board wants to see continuous improvement. And they want to make sure that they're listening and that there's policy development, et cetera, but they didn't have something ready to go out of the box, "This is where we want to go, this is what we want to do." They want to be great, they want to do wonderful things for students, but there is no sort of strategic plan, if you will, in place that they want to hand to me and say, "Go do." So, that gives us all an opportunity to come together and be part of something.
Okay, I have to find my notes now.
All righty.
Oh, my gosh. What just happened? Okay, I'm gonna back out and see if I can find them. Really? I just spent like 20 minutes writing notes.
Oh, no.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna go with what I remember. First of all, thanks to the board for having it filmed because I watched on Tuesday night and really enjoyed your presentation. Thank you very much for being open to all of us here. I have two questions. My first question is, I heard on Tuesday night through the replay that you like to get in, and I heard, I've heard you say this, get in, get involved, get the information and then figure out the plan, which I totally think is a great idea. But my question is, is I haven't heard, with all disrespect, you came here with a lot of controversy. And I, I want to be very open in supporting you in this process. And what I didn't understand and what I still don't understand, and I'm trying to get clarity on, in the two previous districts that you were superintendent, you were a reformer, okay? Very, very well-known reformer, coming in and doing lots of changes. Our board said that you were just doing what was directed by you, which may or may not be true. Irrespective of any of that, what I want to know is, what are your core values? What are your five core values that you bring with you, irrespective of the board, irrespective of this community, as an educator and as a superintendent? What are your core values that you're going to bring here that we can depend on? Because I haven't heard that yet and I'm really interested in knowing what that is.
Thanks. So, I don't really think that Tucson was a reform district. Tucson was under a federal desegregation order and we worked together with the plaintiffs in the case to, in an attempt to end the order so we wouldn't have to force bust children across the district anymore. But I, so I guess I would, I would just respectfully disagree that that was a reform district because I, I didn't feel like it was. It was a district that was trying to survive. Thirty-one hundred dollars, huge budget cuts, over-capacity schools, federal desegregation order, technology infrastructure completely not there. So, so, a wonderful place with wonderful people, but it was, it was, like, foundationally, we had to, to repair and lots and lots of, of that kind of thing. And it was through no fault of anyone's, just that was the situation. So, Douglas County, on the other hand, the board ran in 2009, I was not there. They won handily in that community. Douglas County has long been a school-choice community. First charter school in Colorado in 1993. I graduated from high school in 1992, so I wasn't doing that. So, so, in any case, longstanding embracing of the idea that parents know their children best and they should choose the school for that child because all schools are a bit unique regardless of, if they're a neighborhood school, a magnet school, or whatever. And so, there was, that was that community. And the board had a choice task force when I arrived, seven subcommittees of community teachers, stu-, I think there may have been students. And they had seven subcommittees and one of theirs was on what was called the scholarship program. It wasn't a pure voucher because it had all kinds of idiosyncrasies in it in that the private schools had to be partners of the district, they had to meet all kinds of criteria. In the event that they met the criteria and a student had to get in on their own merits and if they did, the district would give the student and their family a scholarship to take to that particular school, not, it didn't usually cover all of their tuition, but you get the idea. Colorado Department of Ed was fine with it, ACLU sued the district over it. It caused a lot of controversy, a lot of, of differences of opinion. It was a policy-level decision. I didn't feel that it was harmful to a rapidly-growing district. That district is 900 square miles, it's going to double in size by 2040. It'll have, it currently has 67,000 students, it'll have 125,000 students, has nine high schools in their feeders, it'll have 18. So, a rapidly-growing district, a pilot program for 500 students. There really was no, no harm to the district. It was something that the, the board and the committees were very passionate about, but it was torn down by the courts, so it didn't really matter anyway, never spent a day really. So, there was a lot of differences of opinion on things in that community and people were very passionate about their positions on some of these things. There's no question about that. So, so, what are my core values? Well, first and foremost, you know, I, I am, in, in my heart, I teach, my whole six years in Douglas County, I taught professional development courses. Not because anybody asked me to or not because I had to, it's because I wanted to. And so, in my heart, what I am is, is a, a teacher who continually works on my craft of teaching and wants to improve and wants to see people, no matter who's sitting in the seat, a student or adult, whatever, wants to see people grow and thrive and be inspired and lights come on. And so, that's part of who I am. The other part of who I am is, when I became a parent, I became a far better teacher and leader. Because now, I walk through schools and I walk through schools every Thursday morning, I did, I hope to. And I, I walk into every classroom, not to be disruptive, just to see what it feels like, smells like, looks like. If kids are having fun, if they're excited, if they're inspired, if they're scared, what's going on, you know, I just want to know. And I walk in every room with that eye of, "Would I put my little Olivia in here? Would I put my Olivia in there?" And if I want, why won't I? And how can I help that person? How can I, how can I support them? How can I? And, and that's, that's one of the things, and, and yet, that's not my job, so I don't jump in the middle of that. But at the same time, I do work with teachers who want to work with me because I love that work. So, my core values are to empower great people, to do great things, to make sure that systems are in place so that we have processes and foundations and also, so we have a common sort of goal, vision, target, whatever you want to call it, that we're all working toward at a high level. You know, I'm a, I'm a person that doesn't really enjoy micromanagement at all, so that's just not my style. I also don't think I have all the answers. I always think more, many people are better than one. And I, I learned that from Eric Witherspoon, who was a superintendent de moi, who said, "Would you rather take the ACT alone or would you rather we all take it together?" And I'm pretty sure some of you are going to remember the theorems that I've forgotten, geometry or trig, so I want to take it together. So, those are some of the core values, I guess, that I carry with me that are who I am. I understand my role. I'm also, you know, I'm an A student, if you will. I do what I'm supposed to do. I stay within the, the rules, the policies, the laws. But I also know, you know, how to move up to the edge of that when I'm really passionate about reducing the amount of testing for students or something like that that we're working on. And trying to find creative and unique ways to make sure that we're doing all that we can for our students and staff and community and not just using like, "Well, there's nothing we can do about it." That's really not my personality.
Terrific. And my next question has specifically to do with, I spent 15 years as a corporate trainer and consultant, working with Fortune 500 companies. And one of our key values in our organization that we brought into companies was, "You're only as strong as your weakest link." And we are standing in a beautiful building, a beautiful school, that has been underperforming or a failing school for the last 16 years since I've been in this district. And I believe that unless we take care of Umbel High School and the feeder schools coming into this school, we can be as great as we want to be and we can sit in Kingwood and talk about Kingwood High School and talk about Park and how great they are. But until we focus as a community and as a board and as a superintendent in making this school great, I think we cannot sit on our laurels. And so, I would like to know what strategies you bring to this district to help a school that has a history of underperformance so that it can rise? Because everyone knows that when the tide rises, we all rise. And I truly believe that Umbel High School deserves this, the students that go here deserve this, and our community as a whole deserves this.
So, I think it would be premature for me to diagnose and, and say, "Well, this is what Umbel High School needs."
Right, I understand, I don't expect you to diagnose. I'm just asking you, what strategies do you bring? I mean, obviously, you're here for a reason. The, the board hired you for a reason. So, when you have an underperforming school, what are the things you're going to bring in? I know you're going to come into the school and talk to the teachers and talk to the parents and talk, but poor Umbel High School has been a revolving door for strategies and they, and none of them has successfully worked across the board. They work in pieces and parts, but not successfully across the board. So, my question to you is, what do you bring? Not what are you going to do, but what strategies? What skill sets do you bring personally that is going to help this school and thus help our entire community?
So, I guess my response to that would be, I know, everybody wants like, "Oh, I have the silver bullet that's going to fix this school." But that, those, those don't exist. What, what needs to happen though, and I will tell you this, there were schools in Tucson Unified School District that were not performing well and that were not in the fanciest neighborhood that had wait lists out the door for parents who wanted their children in there. And it's about leadership, it's about collaboration with staff, it's about community pride, it's about the way that we express what Umbel High School is. There are so many aspects to that puzzle. It's not as simple as, "We're going to bring this program in here." And so, the bottom line is, I need time to really understand because I wouldn't, I don't think it's fair to this, this staff, this community to come in here and say, "Well, this is what they should be doing." Because they spend every day walking these halls and knowing this community and living this existence and they, that's the information I need to understand before I could then provide feedback and ideas and what if, what about this and what about that? Have you thought about this? That's what needs to happen. And so, it's, it's just, I know that that's not a great answer because it seems like it's no answer. But the bottom line is, it's just too soon, two weeks and three days or whatever it's been.
So, can, can I ask that you're committed to really focusing on this school and the feeder schools so that we can really improve this school? And I love your ideas. I think your ideas are innovative and interesting. And my son currently goes to private school. My school isn't, we're in the district, he will go to a high school. And I want Umbel High School to be a, a choice for him. I want this school to be a choice for him. And to me, it's important. It's a beautiful school with a long history and our board and you and our community has to be willing to focus on the parts that we don't want to focus on, okay? That the commi-, you know, it just appears to me, for 16 years, this is a history. So, you've got a huge, huge, huge chasm to overcome. But what I'm saying is, is I believe that our community needs to rally behind this because, again, we are only as strong as our weakest link and we can say, "Oh, we're HEB this and we're this and this and here we sit with this school." That, to me, is not acceptable. And I think for most parents, that's not acceptable.
Well, two things. Number one, I do believe, and I don't have, so this, this came up a little bit at the last, on Tuesday night. And so, since that time, I, we've been talking about this conversation a little bit. And it's my understanding that there, there have been some things that are in the, in the works, if you will. And perhaps they need to be communicated better and we've had that conversation also so that people have that information. Because I don't have the sense, after the conversations I've had since Tuesday, that the board or the staff or anyone have, have ignored or set aside or not cared about. I really believe that there, this conversation, it has been being had and that there have been ideas and things put into place and that it is going to move forward in a very positive way. But to answer your other question, 1,000% am I committed to every single one of the schools. There's no such thing as, "Oh, well, don't worry about that school." That doesn't exist in my world. So, 100% committed to every single school regardless of the unique aspects, the challenges, the strengths. They're all different, which is one thing I love about schools. So, or campuses. And so, those are things.
Last question, can we have your email? And do you respond to emails personally?
I do, I answer all my own emails.
Awesome.
And my email's the same as everybody else's.
And that will actually be a slide.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. And welcome again to Umbel High School.
Thank you.
I think I heard out of that, because that, that you're willing to empower the campus and the people that work with those kids to come up with those strategies, and with your guidance, am I right? And I mean, because I've worked in underperforming schools, and it's been, from the top, this is what you're going to do, here's your scripted lesson, this is going to be the best thing ever, you know, but nobody ever really listened to those of us in the classroom that had our own ideas. So is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying. Because the, the good news is, this is not me taking a risk, this is fact. We, we know from 12 years of trying the teacher-proofing strategies of the past, that they don't work. And so you can't, I remember reading first, you may not have had reading first here, if you didn't, you were lucky. But in Des Moines, we had reading first, where teachers were handed not only the lesson, the script, but actually where to stand in the room. They called it the moves. And I remember being at those trainings like this, because I can't, I can't take that, because I don't believe that regression to the mean is the right strategy. Right? You take all the best and pull them down in an effort to what you perceive to be taking some that are underperforming and pulling them up. It's a terrible strategy. It didn't work. It doesn't improve anything. Students don't like it, teachers don't like it, parents don't like it. So the bottom line is, if, if you're going to employ a strategy, you have to use all the knowledge and experience you have, as well as the research, to figure out what will work, and to stop trying things that don't work. And me coming up with some random thing, and shoving it down into every classroom and saying, there we go, that will just never work. So, yes, that was a long answer to your question.
I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Hello again.
Hello.
I just want to say, before I get started here, everyone in this room wants to see you succeed and do well, because if, I, I don't think there's any doubt about that. Because in large part, our kids' future depends on the performance of this school district and these high schools. So, welcome here. Again, I appreciate the board giving us this opportunity to come in and ask you these hard questions. Before I ask you, and you have to forgive me, I'm a former prosecutor. I'm coming here with an open mind, and I'm looking for evidence. And the school board's been kind enough to present you, and you've been kind enough to present yourself, and this can't be easy, especially doing it three times. So, thank you for doing this, I know it's not easy. But the reason the school board's doing this, and you're coming in, is because of the controversy surrounding the decision to hire you. And after the last meeting, I had, I, we had all heard about this social media criticism and so forth and so on, and I had heard that too, but I didn't hear any of the specifics. And so, after our last meeting, I went back and pulled the Denver Post article about your departure, and I just wanted to quote a couple of things from you, and with the idea of asking you, why do you think people felt this way about your performance in your previous job and so forth and so on? I'm not going to go through the more negative comments. I just want to focus on what, what concerns me. So if you'll just bear with me for a second.
So are these the ones that are people who write after the story?
Well, no.
Oh, these are in the article?
These are the ones posted by what's called the Douglas County Parents.
Right.
On the school district's website. And what amazes me is that these people actually use their names. They're not like hiding behind some, you know, name or emoji, they're actually using their names. The Denver Post article talks and says, quote, "Many Douglas County parents are celebrating Fagan's departure, while more than 1,000 in the Texas community are already petitioning against your rival and so forth." Here are some of the quotes. And it also says, "Why the uproar? In a release sent following Fagan's announcement, Douglas County parents pointed to several policies they said Fagan had a hand in since her 2010 appointment that caused upset, including the voucher program." And here are some of the comments that some of the parents gave in their names. "This is a happy day for staff, students, parents, and neighbors alike. Let's continue to rebuild our district into one that is ethical, student-focused, and a desirable place to work." Another lady writes, after your departure, "Now we need to get a superintendent that will put students first, respect and take care of our teachers, properly fund our schools, instead of a bloated administration and pet projects." Another person writes, I'm going to leave out part of it, because it's inappropriate, "Thanks for taking our school district back to the dark ages, and running so many great teachers out to better-paying districts. A year ago, my last child graduated a Douglas County high school. In the six years I and my family were associated with the district, I have to say Liz Fagan made the district more about politics than the students." And then finally, "As another Douglas County parent, I am very happy to see her leave. Maybe we can stop the exodus of well-liked, good teachers now. We'll be optimistic the next superintendent will be focusing more on educating the kids and supporting the teachers." There seems to be an underlying theme here, that during your tenure, there was a focus on, more on politics, bureaucracy, bloated the administration, and many good teachers leaving the district under your tenure. Why do you think so many parents went on the public record using their names, voicing these criticisms of your tenure there? Was there a failure to communicate? Do they have a legitimate gripe or grievance? I mean, the, the story I hear is your tenure at your previous school district was nothing but a success, but there are so many parents that went on the public record to criticize you. And again, I'm listening with an open mind. I want to hear your side of the story. Did you listen to these parents? Are their concerns valid? What would you have done differently, that they wouldn't have criticized you in such a manner, and so forth? And I'm listening.
Great. So just keep in mind a couple of things. One, Douglas County's 300,000 people. Two, that there were very strong political fights in Douglas County over the school board. And I have made it my policy for my entire career, that I don't participate in school board elections. I don't participate in the politics of it. I feel like people attempt to drag you into it, but I have worked very hard for a long time, under some very difficult circumstances, that even impacted my family directly. Imagine going after a five-year-old. I have worked very hard not to engage in mudslinging, discrediting, lying, or any of those things, and to instead, focus completely on the work of my district. And so, people can say what they want to say, but the facts don't back those statements. If you look at the facts around teacher turnover, you'll see that Douglas County had been penalized in the past for our high promotion rate. So the Colorado Department of Education had in the past included promotions internally as turnover. And Douglas County has one of the highest promotion rates for their teachers and principals, because the district is unique and is doing a lot of great things for curriculum assessment, instruction. So our people were the most qualified to move up in the system. Nobody could beat them, even when they went out to other districts. So when you look at the data, though, you'll see that we actually have completely normal turnover rates. And in fact, our HR department, their HR department in the past, I'm still working on that, their department in the past, has given annual reports at the school board meeting. If you're really interested, you should dig into those, because every, like, September, they do HR reports, and they show regrettable and non-regrettable, and the percentage of people retiring, and all of those kind of things. And if you look at that, here's what you're going to see. In Douglas County, approximately 90% of the teachers are effective or highly effective. In Colorado, you're required to have that evaluation system. So about 90% of the teachers are highly effective or effective. In those categories, Douglas County retains 95% of their highly effective teachers, and 90% of their effective teachers. They only retain 65% of their partially effective teachers, and none of their ineffective teachers. So there is turnover. But when you look closely at the data, what you see is not the best teachers leaving. And I'm not going to speak in any more granularity than that, on that topic, just because, you know, I, I recognize not everybody is, is cut out to be a teacher, and not everybody wants to stay in teaching, people retire, they move, there's a lot of things. But the bottom line is, we worked very hard, in the most difficult financial circumstances, to retain and attract the very best teachers for our students. There's nothing more important than that, if you care about student achievement and success. Beyond that, I can't remember all of the things that you talked about, but I cut a million dollars out of the central administration during my first two years there, so I really don't understand the commentary on bloat. If you look at, if, there's actually been a recent presentation by the CFO, where she shows the portion and dollar amount of overhead per student, Douglas County versus all the other Colorado districts, the Douglas County one is smaller, it's a lot smaller. So there's, there's a lot of data that show, I mean, assessed valuations in Douglas County last year, on average, went up 17%, meaning some people had a 25% increase in their assessed valuations. Properties are on the market for literally hours before they sell. This is not the signs or symptoms of a district that's struggling. I inherited an 83-plus graduation rate, left with a 90% graduation rate, an ACT composite where every junior in the whole district takes the ACT that broke 22. So there's a lot of really positive things. Now, the bottom line is, did my team and I attempt to meet with those folks and have these conversations? Yes, absolutely. Do, what, were there differences of opinion and deep philosophical divides when the board allowed the, the collective bargaining agreement with the teachers' union to expire in 2012? Yes. Very deep philosophical divides and unhappiness. Very deep philosophical divides and unhappiness about the voucher-scholarship program. Very deep and philosophical divides about the board's value of pay for performance, where they gave highly effective teachers a higher percentage increase than they gave effective, and the effective got more than the partially effective. Those things were very divisive in that community, and caused people to take on very strong political positions, and use whatever means necessary to push them forward. And so, that's what I would say.
Well, I appreciate your answer, and it's, I guess, more specifically, what I'm getting at is, and you know, I, I accept your answer, but why do you think so many parents, you know, for example, when our superintendent retired recently, I don't think there was any controversy, I think most people were not happy to see him leave.
Right.
And there certainly wasn't any, I don't think there was any controversy on, you know, our district's Facebook page, or anything like that. Why do you think, do you think maybe there was a miscommunication with parents? I mean, these are nice, charming-looking people with their photographs and their families, and they're using their names. I mean, that, to me, I, I wouldn't publicly go out there and say some of the things these people are saying about someone, and, you know, using my name that way. So I guess that's, that's my question. Why do you think they would do such a thing? Was there some kind of...
I mean, I'm not going to speak for them, I'm not going to say anything bad about them, I'm just, I'm just not. And so, I can't, I can't tell you what their motives are.
Right.
I can just tell you, I lived it, and I'm just telling you the truth about the situation, that, that that was what it was, and that, you know, there were, there were very deep political divisions, that people were, they won't, they wouldn't get, they wouldn't get passed. I mean, board election after board election after board election.
And you'd mentioned before, that, you know, the school board was very, I guess, divided, and there was some politics going on with the school board there?
Not until 2015, yeah.
And, so that, that makes sense to me. But you also mentioned before, I had asked you some questions about vouchers, and, and you basically said you were just implementing what the school board wanted to do.
Right. The best way I knew how.
Did you have those conversations with our school board? Did our school board talk to you about possibly implementing a voucher program, or anything of that nature?
No, the only conversation we had about that was when I jokingly said to them, you know, this is a question I should have asked six years ago. Do you guys have a, like, a special program you want to see implemented by fall, that I need to know about? And they said, no.
So there was no discussion with our school board? Our school board wasn't, doesn't have an agenda to bring you in and start a voucher program in charter schools, which would take money away
Right.
From the public school. And as you understand, the Texas Constitution talks about public free education, free public education. It doesn't talk about using public funds to support. Are you willing to support the Texas Constitution in that regard?
Yes.
Right.
I have never been a prosecutor, I'm a public defender.
Oh. And you're sitting together, are you together, together?
I was his intern about a quarter of a century ago. I have a question, you brought up the Choice Scholarship Program, and this goes back to the vouchers. And I looked it up, and I read the case, and the Colorado Supreme Court found it unconstitutional. And the court wrote, "This stark constitutional provision makes one thing clear, a school district may not aid religious schools." I just have a, one answer. Do you agree or disagree with the Colorado Supreme Court's decision?
Well, I'm, I'm not a, that decision's about the Blaine Amendment. So if you get in deeply into that, then it, it makes me uncomfortable, because the Blaine Amendment was an anti-Catholic amendment put in, you know, eons ago, in all these states, and it's, it's ugly.
But do you agree with what the court decided, overall, that the voucher provision that your school district and board enacted was unconstitutional? Do you agree or disagree with that decision of the Colorado Supreme Court?
Well, so, it depends. Because the way that, that I built it, so that it was not that, in my opinion, was that the money, it's like a Pell Grant, right? So the money goes to the family, and then you can take it to Notre Dame if you want, right? So that's the way it was built. But that's not the decision of the court, I respect the decision of the court, it's their decision to make, and, and that's that.
But when you got the decision, were you saying, hey, this is good, or, hey, this sucks?
I actually didn't think of it that way at all. I thought, oh, that was an interesting read of, of that particular thing, because the Justice Ives piece, did you read her dissent? It's pretty fascinating about then, no sidewalks by churches and stuff, did you read that part? So I just thought the whole thing was, was fascinating. See, I'm, I'm not a lawyer...
And it wasn't harmful to the district.
And I'm not a policy wonk, or any of those things. So the way I look at it was like this, you know, it's hard for me, if I see one child who's not getting what he or she needs, and there's a pathway that they could get it, I want to make sure that happens. So for this particular program, one of the students was actually going to HumanX Academy, which is an autism school. And his family couldn't afford the school without the program. Now, it ended up that people in the community came together and paid for it, but it's a long story. So those are the things that are hard for me. But at the end of the day, I didn't go, oh, no, you know, the, the court is wrong, you know, that wasn't, what my role was in this, was to understand what the Colorado Department of Education said was allowable, to understand what the lawyers said was allowable, and to put together something that would not harm the district, and that's what I did.
According to what the board told you to do.
According, well, it was the board's committee, they're the ones to do it.
So you just...
If you're asking me if I'd have walked in the door and said, hey, let's do a voucher, the answer is no.
Okay.
Not ever.
Okay, Dr. Fagan, I have a question here that was written. What can we expect as parents of Umbel after your first 100 days? And are you willing to have another town hall meeting to kind of share what you've learned in that 100 days?
No, it's not a bad idea, I haven't really thought about that. But during the first 100 days, I think it's, it's kind of a good idea, maybe, I've got to think about how I'd best do that. But it's, it's actually a really good idea to sort of do an overview of what you learned in the first 100 days, after talking with people and getting to know everyone. So I'm not opposed to that, I need to think about it more, though, I'm not a, I'm not a fast decision-maker on things like this.
Okay, I got a question. Okay, I'm kind of big into pre-k. I know we're kind of fast-growth district, don't know how much, you know, facility, space, schools to facilitate, you know, full-day pre-k. So, you know, maybe in the near future, do you see that somewhat, you know, as a goal of this district? For, I know, the Umbel area is probably affecting a lot more of their young kids than Cass Theater, Kingwood, and I'm a young, and, hey, a lot of my friends, you know, we got some young kids coming up. And they ask me all the time about pre-k, and I'm just kind of seeing, what's your direction on that, here in the future?
Well, in general, I'm a fan of pre-k. I'm a fan of good pre-k, I want to put that out there. But I, I think that this facility study that we're doing right now might give us a glimpse into space and all of those kind of things, because there's no question that early childhood is expensive, particularly when you look at appropriate ratios, but it's very valuable also, and sometimes there's different ways to, to approach it, so I just need to learn more about it here and in the state. Thanks. And I understand, I understand how you feel about that with young kids.
Hi.
Hi.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for opening yourself up to all these public forums, I can, I know how intimidating that can probably be. I'm hoping our board has told you of all of our wonderful parent and volunteer groups that we have here in the community. And my first question is, how can we help you... that we have here in the community, and my first question is, how can we help you succeed during your tenure and what do you see as the role that the PTAs, PTOs play on each individual campus?
Oh, thanks. I just met with the PTA gals today, yeah, so, so the PTAs are obviously a collaborative group where parents and teachers and leaders at a campus can work together in the best interest of the students that are uniquely theirs, and so I've seen a lot of different strategies or formats of that work in different places, but it's, it's the more that we partner in the education of our children, the education side and the parent side, the more successful students are, we know this is true. And so, the whole idea of PTAs and volunteering and being in classrooms, supporting teachers, helping them out, just hugely positive in early childhood and all the way through frankly, I know that parents sometimes taper off a little bit in the secondary, but it's always great to have parents in the buildings together with our teachers and staff. So, how can you help me? Well, I think early on, the best way that, that you can help me is by creating opportunities for me to meet people and to get to know them and we actually, you know, I've talked with different parent groups about, you know, and, and the name I've come up with lately is Lattes with Liz, but, you know, whatever. So, so things like that, you know, that we can come up with together, that we can work to build that infrastructure of communication and collaboration and working together, because if we are going to ultimately come together and sort of build what is our vision of where we're going, you know, we need people to participate and be part of that and have conversations, whether they're focus groups or things like this, where we can really collect information about where we want to go and, and sort of capture that in a positive way. So, those are some things that off the top of my head, I think would be really positive.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, I have another question.
All right.
Okay. If our board decides to do things that might be viewed as unethical, immoral, or illegal as we were told in Douglas County, would you be willing to risk your job to not do it or just do it like it was done in Douglas County?
So, I'm not aware of any unethical, illegal, or immoral acts of board members in, in Douglas County. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not. And there was recently an investigation of, of two board members, but the report said they didn't actually do any, they didn't violate any policies or anything like that, so, so I don't believe that actually occurred, but I can promise you that that is, you know, I'm too young to retire and, and I, here's the thing about me, I've never done anything that I can't sleep at night about, never. I just won't. And so, you don't have to worry about that with me. You can, what I tell you, you can take to the bank, you can bring it back to me and say, "You said this," and I'll say, "Yep, I did, that's what I said." And, and I'm just not going to participate in anything in any of those categories and I'm very comfortable telling anybody, any boss, whatever, that that's how I feel and I'm actually really not worried about that because I feel like I'm a pretty good interviewer and I've interviewed a lot of people over the last 20 years and so, my interview with the board was a two-way interview and I was interviewing them as well. So I don't feel like I need to worry about that, but I just, just in case you want to know, absolutely not going to participate in anything like that.
I have another question, this is more about you personally, and you said that you and your husband did this analysis and decided that Texas was the state you wanted to live in and then further narrowed it down to Umbel ISD, and I'm just curious, what is it about Texas that made that state stand out for you and your family and then more directly, Umbel ISD?
So, I don't want to get too personal with my family and our, our uniquenesses of us, but I feel, you know, I'm, I'm a fan of freedom and, and a lot of the values that I feel are consistently held in the state of Texas over time. And I also feel that, you know, within Texas, Umbel ISD is a very family-centered, student-centered, whole-child environment. It is safe and it is a place that is, is interested in continually improving in the best interest of students, that's important to me. It's not a place that's all about the test, all about the test, all about the test, because I can't, I can't do that, not to my kids or not to any others. So those are some of the things. The other thing is, if you have, if you are a superintendent candidate and you have narrowed down your look for different districts, you watch board meetings, you look at financial things, you look at a lot of different aspects of the district and, you know, Dr. Sconzo and this board and previous boards have done a very good job of, of the foundational aspects of the district, and when I, when I went to Douglas County, that was not the case. And so, you learn as you go, you learn new things and it's very difficult when you inherit an insolvent district that is heading into a recession. And you have to make difficult decisions that are not entirely popular, but they're best for the students and you move forward and you do it. And so, those are some of the things, you know, there's, there's other pieces of it, you know, there's kind of silly pieces of it, my older daughter is a swimmer and Texas is a swim state, so, you know, that's one of the more, you know, kind of probably not the number one priority, but it's, it's an important thing to her and so she would want to be in a place that's a swim state. And so, those are, those are some of the things I feel comfortable sharing, you know, I know you may not believe this, but I'm a bit of a private person, and so, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable telling you that I feel like the state of Texas aligns with our family values and I'm comfortable telling you that my research at all different levels of school districts revealed that I felt that this was the very best place for me professionally and my children as they grow up, not just the school district, but the community as a whole.
Good evening.
Hello.
I have a question about your interview process. Hopefully, the board told you about the good, the bad, the ugly of Umbel ISD when you were interviewing, and so I'd like to understand what they told you are the three biggest challenges facing Umbel ISD and, you know, if you know what those are and after two weeks, did that change? Does she understand change in that respect? Not that you have the answers to solve them, but just educate us on what you understand are the biggest challenges.
Well, I think growth is one of the challenges that was very clear in the interview process, that there is, there, there is sort of a growth feeling that will be achieved at some point, perhaps around 52,000 or so students, but that the growth that's coming, the infrastructure to keep up with it, all of that is definitely on the radar. Variation in student success is a conversation that we've had and that's how I know that there is great investment in that and interest in that and making sure that we do have high standards for all children and, and support them in the right ways in achieving those high standards. I would say those are probably the top two things that were challenges. The other thing is, I know that the Texas Legislature has done some stuff with teacher evaluations recently and I think that that's probably, it, it seems like a smaller item, but from experience, it's not, and so I think that's another thing that was, that sort of rose up as something that we will have to work together on.
Were the number of tests that students have to take raised as an issue at all?
Yes, we actually talked about the pressure that students feel in the amount of testing and the way that students feel it being high stakes, as, that was definitely part of the conversation too.
And although I said I wouldn't hold you to anything, but do you think you have any ideas on how you might tackle any of those?
Well, we've already talked about, you know, success for all students and I really don't want to say, "Well, this is what we need to do," I really want time and, and I just, I appreciate all of your patience in allowing me to have that. I, I don't, I don't want to be pushed into saying this is what I think to do.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw then.
Okay.
So, so let me ask you this.
I mean, I can tell you on the capital side, that's really, that's much easier, right?
I was going to ask you about the capital.
Okay, so we can talk about the capital side. So there's already a facility study process going in, in right now, which is wonderful because I love that and so, it, it will tell us the needs of not only new growth areas, but current facilities, which we need to know, so that we can have quality facilities for all students across the district. And so, once we have that information, you can really sort of lay out a master capital plan that addresses the most urgent needs and then it tears it down, throws, puts the growth pieces in there, allows us to do long-term financial planning, so I think that that is the right strategy in my opinion to move forward in that piece of it. So I feel like a lot of that's underway and the conversations are going and we'll continue to have those. And I forget what else I said, so the testing piece, you know, testing is, is a lot of legislative stuff and the other side of that though is, you know, one student at Kingwood High School came up and said, "District benchmarks and this and that and the other," so I need to understand better what all the tests we're using and why we're using them and if they really do measure the most important things our kids are doing, if we're required to do it or if we're sort of required to do it, and I just need to understand that a lot, a lot more before I can propose any kind of a, you know, potential solution to it. I know there's already work being done, conversations being had about, you know, schools that are perhaps less successful and so I need to learn more about that before I would have any additional advice for that group or questions to ask, sometimes that's where you start, it's just, "Have you thought about this, what about that, how are we going to deal with this?" And what was the fourth one we talked about?
Well, testing is what I added on.
Yeah, but I said three.
Well, the disparity of, between schools.
Yeah, there was another. Legislation, was that it? Okay, well.
No, no.
[inaudible]
Oh, teacher evals, that was the one. Thank you. That's good. Teacher evals, I don't, I don't have, I have, I've actually asked for all the instruments, they've been emailed to me, but I haven't had a chance to dig into those yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Fagan, I have a question here that was sent in.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm just reading it like it is because I don't want to miss anything.
So polite.
How often will you meet with principals of the district and hear their needs and also make sure they are being held accountable and love you being on the campus every Thursday morning?
So, I believe it's scheduled to meet with principals at least once a month as we sit and then we'll go from there and decide if we need to meet more, meet less, you know, I think that there's a lot, so meeting with all the principals is great on things that impact all of them, but it's not great on things that only impact five of them. So, I prefer, you know, sort of that personalized approach of being in the building, talking on the phone, texting, whatever we need to do, you know, and, and to differentiate for different principals and their needs. So, right now, once a month and we'll go from there and, you know, we're all accountable, we know that.
I have a question over here.
All right.
Okay, I've got one question now. What are your thoughts on ESA, that was passed last, last year, 2015, every student succeeds at the federal level?
Oh.
What are your thoughts like, how's that going to direct our district coming in the near future?
Well, you know, it just depends on how your state Department of Education interprets and implements that. So, you know, it, across the country, there's huge variation, so you have New Hampshire who took every single aspect of it, that carved out a piece of flexibility and they expanded into that and they're really moving in the direction of more, more teacher powerful, authentic assessments, really getting away from just this one-size-fits-all kind of assembly line model, and so they're doing that, but other states are actually not making many changes at all because it's not actually required and, you know, when they were working on that bill, Senator Gardner, who's from Colorado, I talked with him multiple times and tried to encourage him away from certain things, but I don't feel like it was, they changed that much. There, there is some space in the testing and the tests you use to maybe do something a little better, but there's still a lot of just sort of bureaucratic requirements that they haven't taken out yet, so, I don't know, it wasn't, it's huge by the way and I don't see it as a giant victory. Good old ESSA.
Anyone else?
All right.
Good evening.
Hello.
It's a two-part question.
Okay.
So, you were talking about teacher evaluations and preparing teachers for that and you talked about supporting teachers, so my first question is, based on your experience with schools and also your study as a graduate student, which models of professional development have you seen to be most effective in affecting change in instruction? And then, my second question would be, you talked about supporting teachers, how do you envision that working or what have you seen to be effective in supporting teachers who have been identified as teachers who are struggling in the classroom?
Okay, so the first part of that question is professional development that works and so my response to that is, the best professional development I've ever seen mirrors the kind of learning opportunities that we want to provide for students. And so, teachers actually experience for themselves the things that they might want to move into their classrooms. And so, I remember the old days where I'd go to professional development, they'd say, "This is what you should do," but they weren't doing it. And so, we know today that that doesn't make any sense. And so, the other thing is, it needs to be differentiated. Teachers have different, you know, some teachers have small children, they don't have a babysitter, they can't come to these professional development opportunities that are, but they love the online options, you know, sort of the Khan Academy version, if you will, where you can pause it and go make dinner and then come back later and work on it a little bit more and rewind it back and do, and people go, "Ooh, that sounds really boring," but if it's really well done and it's not just somebody sitting there droning on, but instead, teachers going through a process of building a really great unit or, or something to that effect, teachers have really loved that in, in my previous district. So, the blend of options that are available that are aligned to their goals, right? So when I was a teacher and they'd be like, "Okay, this is the year we're all going to learn WordPerfect," and I was like, "Well, I already know WordPerfect," you know, but I still had to go to those meetings, I don't like that. So, and, and so that's, that's not what we want to see for students, right? We don't want to see students sitting there learning WordPerfect if, y'all remember WordPerfect, right? F1, yeah. So, you had to have the little strip across the top of your computer so you could know what the little function keys did. And so, but seriously, that, it's really important that number one, it's aligned to the goals that we seek, number two, that it models that which we hope to see in the classroom, number three, it'll, it empowers teachers through their own choices, they decide what they want to take, when they want to take it, how they want to take it, it's aligned to their goals, their development plans, because, just because I'm fantastic doesn't mean I don't want to learn anything, right? But I don't want to learn something I already know and so, you, it has to offer something for everyone, whether you're, you know, one of the most talented teachers we've ever seen or somebody who's a first-year teacher. So, professional development, that's, that's part of my love, I love that stuff. The other part of it, your question was?
Supporting struggling teachers.
Supporting struggling teachers. So, it really depends on the struggle because classroom management issues are very different than somebody who's just working on building units differently or meeting unique learners' needs or, you know, there's all these different pieces. So, it's my experience that building leaders, principals, assistant principals, associate principals, really work with teachers to grow and develop in those areas. I, I myself only work with teachers who want to work with me just because I think it's, it's weird for some teachers and so, my sort of practice is that I try to read people and if they're, if it's the getaway, getaway, then I'm like, "Oh, okay, you know, I'm just here to visit." But if it's, "Hey, what do you think about this and how should I do this and let's see if you actually do know something," then, then I'm all about that, you know, and so I have done everything from just say, "Hey, that was really great today," or whatever, to a teacher and I built a unit together, we, we worked through Google Docs, so we could, you know, I'd write stuff and he'd delete it and I'd be like, "You can't do that, I'm the superintendent." He'd delete it again, you know, it was all in good fun, but, but seriously, we, we co-developed across, because you don't have to be together to collaborate in the 21st century, you can be in different places and so then, I had these different teachers that were really comfortable working with me on these things and so, it, sometimes it gets to me too much and they're like, "Hey, you didn't look at my unit yet." I'm like, "Well, I had a board meeting." And so, I like to do it that way too, so it just depends on meeting the, the unique needs of that person, but my overall sort of value, if you will, on that is that, you know, I think we all, you know, if we know better, we do better and so, it's really helping people understand what their strengths are and maximizing those, helping them understand what their, their downsides or challenges are, loving them enough to tell them the truth, but doing it in the right way so that it feels like coaching, not like criticism, and then helping them design a path to move forward, just like you would for a student and as long as they're showing that improvement and that progress, you know, you've got to, you've got to support that and be in favor of it. But if, but if there isn't progress or improvement or whatever, then you have to figure out when that, when that point is, but I don't do that work, that's, that's not my world and that's the work that principals do and so, what I do is, is support principals and ensuring that they're showing that same process for everyone.
And just one follow-up question, so, in talking about the importance of it being personalized and differentiated, so on individual campuses, do you see that best being supported by teacher leaders who are recognized? So in talking about the importance of it being personalized and differentiated, so on individual campuses, do you see that best being supported by teacher leaders who are recognized informally or in the more formal roles? For example, we do have academic lead teachers on campuses in the different content areas. And so, again, I don't want to put you in a position where you're predicting and saying what should be done, but even based on your past experiences, if you've had people at the campus level in that support role as formal teacher leaders, instructional coaches, have you worked in systems like that?
Yeah, I feel like you're pulling me into trouble space with my principals, but, 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 no, you know, I, I think there's a lot of different ways, but personally, for me, I think if somebody's extraordinarily talented at something and they want to support others in that, then heck yeah, you know, I'm all for it. Some of the greatest teachers I've known actually weren't comfortable doing that because they weren't comfortable saying, you know, "That's not very good" or, you know, "You did that wrong." Because those are their peers and they're not, they don't want to be in an evaluative role with them. And so, so it really depends on the personality of the teachers. And I think principals do a really good job of knowing who their talented folks are, who feel comfortable and have those relationships with their peers and can do that work, and they know who the ones are who are incredible but aren't really interested in that. I've literally had a great teacher say to me, "If I wanted to do that, Liz, I would be a principal." And I was like, "Well, that's fair." So, so, so I think it depends on the circumstances and the people and the, and the group of teachers you'd be teaching. There's just a lot that goes into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so if you are truly what you say you are, which I believe you are, and you are ready to, you know, empower teachers and, you know, that you really believe in all of these things, how are you going to help cultivate that among the people that are out there working with them, district administrators, principals? Because not everybody, not everybody has the same philosophies, not everybody has the same beliefs, but yet you're providing, you know, kind of the overall climate. Am I communicating this right? I know what I'm trying to ask and it's, you probably know what I'm trying to ask.
I do. I know what you're asking. No, I totally do. You know, it's my experience that there are different styles of leadership. There's, and some, and there can be variability, just like different styles of teaching, right? But there are certain things, certain values that we all need to hold to move together to get, you know, and, and I think that in my experience, teachable moments present themselves and if you're a good coach, you know how to grab onto those and support somebody and help them be better tomorrow than they were yesterday without really, you know, it being a big deal. And, and so that's what I've done is really worked to build capacity in other leaders with, you know, I'm not a, I don't like the, "Okay, we all need to get together. Okay, there was one guy late on Thursday, so you all need to be on time," you know. There's none of that. So, so what I like is truly individual coaching based on their authentic situations. And leaders are very quick to say, "Man, I, this is great at my school. I'm doing this so well and here's how I know it." And if they're comfortable and if we have that relationship, which is why I keep saying, "Please give me time to build relationships." But, but then they'll also, once they trust and they, "You have that relationship," leaders will say to me, "Okay, but I got this one problem." You know, "I got this one thing and I've done this, 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 and it didn't work." And then it's my job not to just give them the answer, right? Instead, it's to build the capacity for them to, to create that answer and implement themselves. So it's, it's more of an art than a science, but yes, it's important to, to continually build capacity in leaders because I don't, I don't just have a set of like, "Oh, these are Liz's philosophies because I like them," right? The things that I, that I like are things that I know and have seen bring the best out in other people and in students and in staff and in communities. So, so helping leaders sometimes see that is, is my job.
Okay. And I know I already said this before to you, but dive into that evaluation system because if it's used right, it, it can do all the things that, that you're talking about with coaching teachers.
Great. Well, I hope it is seen as a growth tool and not as a, a gift from the state. I know.
So, Dr. Fagan, I really love what I'm hearing you say about teaching to the individual child, designing education for children, empowering teachers. And I'm going to give you a personal experience that I had in the district because what you're saying was not my experience. And I've been out of the district now for five, four years. My son came into the district from kindergarten through second grade. And in second grade, he was reading at a fifth-grade level. And the teacher that he had, along with counselor and the principal of his elementary school, said he was not allowed to check out books at the fifth-grade level from the library. And he had to stay within the second-grade level because it would be unfair to the other children in the classroom. This pretty much crushed, crushed my child. He was not allowed to bring books in that were not in the second-grade level. And so my question for you is, so we left the district, or we left, we didn't, we're still in the district, but we ended up going to Pines Montessori where the philosophy really is individual child, individual learning, okay? Amazing concept. I am 100% on board on that. But my question for you is, is that I don't believe that all the teachers within the district really are, have the skillset to effectively teach that way, but it is an awesome model. It's an awesome model. It does work. So my question for you is, and it's not so much a question, it's more of a comment of what do we do to educate our teachers to allow children and meet children where they are so that they can be educated and stay motivated in their, wherever they are? Because that's, I really hear that's your philosophy and I think it's awesome. And if we have a principal who, who, if the principals buy into that and then the teachers buy into that, I think it could really change our district in an amazing way. So what do you do when a particular principal doesn't necessarily agree with that and they think what they're doing is working for the majority and they don't need to really focus on that one or two children that are in the classroom, either at the high end or the low end, they're teaching to the medium?
So I would just turn that just a little bit because here's what I think is the real, the real issue, is that I think that principals and teachers in some places have felt tremendous pressure because of the labeling and the tests and all that stuff. And so I haven't really met a principal or teacher when you sit down and really talk philosophically about children and learning that doesn't agree with what you said. But where it gets challenging is they get nervous that, "What if my scores go down? What if I can't meet this thing or that thing or, or whatever?" And so it's a little bit paralyzing. So it's not necessarily teachers who don't have the skill because I'll tell you, like, it was like taking handcuffs off the masses in Douglas County when we said, "Listen, here's the good news, everyone. Great teaching produces great results, so we're going to teach great and our community is all agreeing that if the results aren't quite as good, we're good with it." Now, that was a scary thing for me, too, because I know what happens, you know, because immediately what's going to happen, "Oh, blah, blah, blah," you know, the scores are down. But the truth is, and it's not just Douglas County, all over the country we're watching this happen, where when children have quality instruction, their scores go up regardless of their demographics. So that's, that's the piece. But we all have to come together, I keep talking about this, right? But we all have to come together and, and shake hands on that and say, you know, "We're, we are willing to support teachers in doing what's best for students and this is what that looks like, you know, but, but we understand that we're not going to be, you know, teach to the test, teach to the test, teach to the test." We understand that because that is a scary thing. Now, the good news for me is, my experience is, the, the scores don't go down. They actually go up. They go way up because with engagement, you get retention, with retention, you get better thinkers and thinkers take better tests and it all works out. But it is a scary moment for a teacher who feels like their job, their livelihood, their reputation is on the line. So that's the conversation.
I, I totally agree with that and I don't think teachers' salary should be based on their test scores that come out of their classrooms. I think that's wrong. And just to follow up on that, my son has been tested at Pines Montessori every year. They don't, they don't teach the test. They don't teach, the only thing they do in first grade is teach them how to bubble because they've never known how to bubble. But they don't teach to the test at all. And they do standard academic testing and all of those school, all of those children flourish. They flourish and they never teach the test. So I think somehow we have to get out of this mode that says we're tying everything to the test because it's not, as you've so eloquently said, a test is one snapshot. It is not the whole child and we need to be teaching to the whole child.
I agree, but I'll tell you, I'll never forget, I sat down with Tim Taylor in Denver and I said, "Tim, blah, 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 standardized tests." And he said, "Hey, give me something else. Give me something else." Because you, you don't get to just go on faith, right? That doesn't work here. So I am not disagreeing with you, Liz, but you, the educators, you, the experts, you've got to give me something else. If this isn't it, tell me what's it because I'm in, I'm into that. But right now, this is all I have. And so I, I thought, "Ah, I can't argue with him about that. He's right." So that's the challenge facing our profession right now, is we think we know what the right things we need to teach kids are and we're moving in that direction. We've moved away from the sort of archaic version of it and we're moving in that direction, but we have to figure out the accountability piece of it. We have to do that. And it's not going to come from the state and it's not going to come from Pearson and it's not going to come, it's not going to come from those places. They're just not going to do that. So, you know, I actually met with, so we were working on a bunch of stuff and I was, we were looking for an LMS and an SMS and all these technology solutions that our staff needed to make their life work. And I actually sat down with a vendor and I won't say who they are. And I said, "Here's what we need. This is what we need in our district to help our teachers have amazing opportunities for kids, da-da-da." And they were like, "Oh, that is so great. That's exactly what the world needs. That's what education needs." And I'm like, "Great, so you'll build it because we want to buy it?" And they're like, "No, we're not going to build it." I said, "Why not?" They said, "Because we wouldn't consult anybody but you." And I said, "What?" Yeah, most people, what they're buying is, "Here's the standards and this will get you a better test score." And that's what they want. So it's, you just have to understand the environment we've been in, in education for the past 12 years and the way that teachers have been treated and the way principals have been treated, the way schools have been treated, all based on one test one day. So it takes time to come out of that and move into a, a better day and, you know, it's a slow process. It's early adopters first, pioneers first.
Hey, Dr. Fagan, I just wanted to say hi and welcome to UMBLE ISD because I know there's a lot of questions going on and I don't have any questions for you. I just wanted to say welcome. My first town hall meeting, so I don't know if you're supposed to have a question up here. What's your favorite color?
It's black, which will surprise everyone, but yeah, thank you.
And you know, and I think there's a lot of experience in UMBLE ISD that are not negative. I've had a wonderful experience with my children in UMBLE ISD. In fact, I had the exact opposite experience as her. My second grader was reading at a fifth-grade level. I didn't even know. And I was telling the librarian, I said, "Oh, she's reading this book, you know, and I just, I don't, I think it might be too much for her, you know, I don't think she should read that." She said, "Well, what book is it?" She said, "But that's a fifth-grade reading level book, you know." And I said, "Well, she loves it and she insists on more." And so my, the librarian at our school went and got more books for her and said, "I think you'd like these," you know, and encouraged it. And, you know, she might not have been, I don't think she was testing at the fifth-grade level with the, the reading levels, but once we told her teacher, I said, "You know, she's reading these books," and her teacher said, "Well, I'm evaluating her on the wrong book." And redid her evaluation and, you know, we have great teachers, we have great principals. I love our principal at our elementary school and our, in the middle school my kids go to. And so in general, I think most people, the majority of people have great experience with UMBLE ISD and I'm very excited to see what you do for our school district.
Well, thank you. Congratulations on your first town hall meeting. That's great.
I'm giving white time.
Ta-da.
Okay, so then we're getting close to the time, close to eight o'clock. And so I have two questions here that will, I'll ask and then I will, listen to this, I'm going to, I'm going to let you wrap up.
Thank you.
With anything, there you go. I thought that was nice of me as a moderator.
He's the moderator.
Yeah. I got a feeling she's going to be coaching me a lot. So it's really two, two questions here. How long were you a teacher in the classroom? And then the follow-up to that is, should UMBLE ISD teach sexual health, health education in high school?
Oh. How long was I a teacher in the classroom? Let's talk about that. So it depends on how you count. I was a teacher full-time in the classroom for three years and then I taught chemistry during my first two years being a principal because my first school was so small. I told you I was in the, the Porous County in Iowa, Decatur County, and we couldn't hire a chemistry teacher. And so I wanted those kids to have chemistry and so I taught it. And it was the best thing I ever did, by the way. I would still do that today if I could actually make it happen. But it was the best thing I ever did because I wasn't just the principal, I was a teacher. And so when I was at a faculty meeting, I'd be like, "Dude, I have to do that, too," you know? And I know what you're talking about. And so then my, then I went to Prairie City Monroe, which was a different school district closer to Drake where I was doing my, my graduate work. And I still taught a period of chemistry today, a day, but it was a larger school, larger community and I felt, I was, there were times, I was the only administrator in the building. So, you know, something happens, I had to leave and then it wasn't really fair to my students, even though the other chemistry teacher would jump in. But I loved it. And again, I would say to the, you know, the faculty there, like, "See, I, I had to do that, too." And so it really was a good thing and, and I loved all of those. And then as time went on, I taught adjunct professor classes for Argosy University in Leadership and continued to teach professional development in my schools and ultimately districts because that's, I love to do that. So, okay, the other question, should it be taught in high school? Well, I, I think that that's not really a black and white question. I think that there's a lot of gray in that, so I would have to really understand what specifically are we talking about? You know, my goal a lot of times in education is to teach kids how to think, not what to think. And so it's all about allowing kids to have the abilities to analyze information with certain topics. I think it's highly encouraged for that to be with parents and, and still for students to have that ability to critically think about those topics with their families that are most appropriate at home. However, there are some things that get, get handed down in curriculum and sometimes that's a good thing, too, because sometimes kids don't get things at home. And I think as long as we're partnering with parents well and parents are given opportunities to make choices and have active consent of various sensitive items, then we can provide an opportunity for students who may not have that opportunity at home and we can also work with parents who are less comfortable with it at school. So I think it's a, it's not an either-or, it's, it's a middle-ground kind of thing and that's my high-level view of it. All right. Okay.
Final comments?
Thank you again for being here. Thank you for your honest questions and just everything you did. I have absolutely loved my two and a half weeks and I'm going to get my daughters this weekend and bring them back with me. And so that is going to be exciting because I've been missing them. But I had to negotiate with my 11-year-old when we're like, "Let's talk about moving." And she's like, "Okay." She says, "All right, I have one request," you know. I told you, she's a swimmer. We talked about that earlier. And she says, "I want to stay with my team and swim through my state meet and then I'm willing to go." So this week is state and then we're willing to go. So, yeah, it's going to be a good time and they are going to love it here as much as I do. So thank you so much for everything. You all have been very warm and welcoming, open-minded. I appreciate it a lot.
Okay, so up on the screen you will see if you would like to contact Dr. Fagan. There's a couple of ways to do that. We do want to thank you for being here this evening and taking the time out to get to know our new superintendent. And this is the second time I've really got to hear her in this format. And I can just tell you that I am so excited about where we're headed as a district and about Dr. Fagan being part of that and working with Dr. Fagan.